Like the call to order.
Thank you.
Like the call to order, the town of McCandless, meeting of town council for September 12th, 2022. We start by the with the pledge allegiance, council member Casey, can you lead us please?
Certainly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, as we remind everybody, as we start how we conduct ourselves this evening, we work together to better our town. We all have an equal voice. We may disagree. But we will do so with civility and respect because in the end, we're all neighbors. Um, announcements, uh, we'll start, we'll go off topic here first. New guy here to my right, I think a lot of you, I think, yeah, a lot of you, a lot of you met him that came a little bit earlier. And for those that are joining us online. Uh, Brian is our new town manager. Um, sorry, we don't have, this is the minor leagues, not the major leagues. So we don't have like the rose garden to present you to. The speech and everything. So, but uh, no, Brian comes with us for those that didn't get his background. Uh, he grew up a part of his childhood here in McCandless. He's a graduate of Allegheny College. He's worked in the US Congress, the PA State House with an elected official in Richland Township. An assistant borough manager, a township manager, and now our town manager. So, welcome, uh, to town yet again.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, I think Mr. Casey, thank you for bringing flowers to, you know, improve everything up here. So. Uh, community day recap, uh, it was a fabulous event. I know my wife and I were there for about half of it. Um, uh, there was too many people involved to thank each and everybody, but I guess I will extend. My thanks and I'll speak on behalf of council. So Brian, everybody that's on your team that worked on it, please. You can let it, let give a, give everybody thanks for what a great job it was. And then Tricia on the activities committee, everybody that. Uh, that, 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 uh, that helped greatly appreciated. Um, next up, the Heritage Center Golf outing, that's October 7th. They also have on October 8th, uh, Friends of North Park. Uh, we have a rain garden workshop, uh, coming up on, on September 13th. And then, uh, more details to follow, but the EAC fall roadside cleanups will be October 15th and 22nd. Uh, so check, uh, our, our website. And then we have the interns starting in the police department. Is that what this is? Uh, they, I guess they're not here this evening. Do you want to get you, I guess for your report, you can give us the briefing or something, Ryan? Okay, very good. Um, any announcements from anyone else up here on council that I might have missed? Nope. Okay, moving on. Uh, a public comment on agenda items, uh, as we do, anyone in the room, uh, please approach. Uh, just give us your name and your address and those that are online. Put your name and address in the chat box and then we'll get you there. So if there's any public comment from those in attendance. Take time. Do you have anybody online? Okay, very good. Uh, moving on, uh, now we have a stormwater, uh, ordinance. Do we have a presentation first, Brian?
Yes.
Yes. Probably even give us that.
Does this need to be a?
Yes, well, he's part of it.
Yeah, I think we should do make the part of the public hearing if you're okay with that.
Yes.
Um, so I'll call to order before you start, I'll call to order the public hearing. Um, on an ordinance amending article nine thirteen of the town code of ordinances, stormwater management. We'll start out with a presentation so everybody understands what we're talking about and then we'll allow public, uh, questions from council. And then public comments or questions there happen. So.
Sure, sounds good. It's just loading here. Apologize for the delay. A little slow. Were you able to enable, uh, screen sharing? Looks like it's, it still says host disabled participant screen sharing.
Yeah, yeah, I think you need to hit stop sharing. Yeah, just leave it. She should be able to share. Can you do that now?
It's still saying host. Yeah, I think you're sketch sharing. Perfect.
So that shouldn't give her the ability to.
And then Kelly try to hit share screen.
All right. All right, now we're busy. So, uh, tonight I'm here to talk to you, um, about the 2022 ordinance updates for our stormwater ordinance. Um. I know we've been up here twice now, so, um, I know stormwater is a little bit dry of a topic. Um, so to keep this flowing, I'm gonna give you a high level summary of some of the major changes. Um, if you have any questions or comments, just let me know. I'm more than happy to go into things in more detail. So the goal of this ordinance update was really to, um, address four, um, different items throughout the ordinance. The first one is to ensure that the code promotes responsible development in a more user-friendly manner. Um, additionally, we, we want to address modifications, um, that we have commonly seen requested. Um, and approve, uh, and approved, uh, to streamline the development process. Um, additionally, we are making updates to align with the P A D E P and in some areas, we want to at least meet them. We are, uh, more stringent in many of our areas, um, and we are also addressing errors and inconsistencies in the code. And then finally, we want to touch on the ownership and inspection and maintenance responsibilities of, uh, any private developed. Pond that is coming into the town in the future. So our first main area was updating the small project stormwater management thresholds. So on the left of the screen, I have our existing threshold, um, and on the right I have what we're proposing. So currently our ordinance, uh, focuses on a small project, um, being an activity that disturbs less than 5,000 square feet. Our adjusted table really focuses on not only the proposed earth disturbance, but also looks at the amount of impervious area that's being added. So, um, now applicants have a, a more efficient way to really look at the stable and figure out where they fall. So they'll look at the impervious area and the proposed disturbance and then whatever, uh, criteria they fall into, that's what they follow in the ordinance. Um, so one thing to mention, we have in our, uh, increase in impervious area that number two for a small project, which is, uh, in addition of. Four hundred to twenty-five hundred square feet. That's something, uh, you know, we would see with like a residential. So we're not changing really anything on that side. For these small projects, um, they'll still have a small sump or something, but this is just more of a streamlined, um, assessment of really where our applicants need to look. Um, and we want to focus on, you know, someone who's coming in with a small project, but say they're paving everything, you know, that's different than just disturbing a little bit of grass. And putting it back to grass. So in addition, we're updating the definition of impervious surface. The main thing here is that we want to just have, um, aggregate areas. So any sort of gravel surface now being looked at as an impervious area. Um, the intent here is really if, if someone wants to put in gravel and then five years put in like a impervious driveway or patio. We already have that accounted for and we don't have to have them come back through, um, you know, stormwater is already designed for that. Uh, this does align with a lot of codes, um, in the area and it's something that we, we do pretty commonly see. So in addition, for our really common storms, so our one and our two-year design storms, um, we are going to be applying a fifty percent release rate. Um, so I have a little example on here that shows currently our one hundred percent release rate for these storms, um, as well as the fifty percent. The intent here is, um, really to focus on those storms that we see a lot and making sure we're getting our best bang from our buck in our ponds. So instead of releasing exactly, you know, what we could in our, uh, post-developed conditions being equal to our existing conditions. We're now holding back a little bit more. So just trying to, um, address any sort of flooding issues and ensure we're, um, having a, a strong design practice. Uh, one thing to note here as well is we do have some areas in like the Pine Creek watershed, for example, that already have release rates in place. Um, this is from a, a larger study, um, fifty percent for one and two year, uh, is more stringent than those. So this is in addition to. To those requirements and would apply to, um, every project coming in, not only the ones in, uh, the special release rate districts. So, uh, another item which I'll, I'll go through this one a little bit, a lot of words on this page, um. This is a, a proposed addition to, uh, a statement we have that discusses attenuation or de-watering, um, of facilities. So right now our ordinance says that, uh, de-watering should occur for the, a one-year twenty-four hour storm, uh, for at least twenty-four hours. So over twenty-four hours, we need to be slowly de-watering, can't be faster than that. Um, we've seen a lot of modifications coming in for rain gardens, for example, for this one. Um, so any facility that's using, uh, more of a natural infiltration. Uh, the soil that's, it's on the land already, um, those are sometimes infiltrating a little bit faster. So in order to, um, not make our code less stringent, but also promote green infrastructure. Uh, we're adding a statement in at the end of this, it's the green underline text, um, that basically. Just summarizes, hey, if you have an infiltrate, if you want to do a rain garden and you, and you've tried to meet this requirement and you can't just come to us, ask for a modification. Like we're aware that this, this can occur. Um, so we felt that would be a happy medium to really address both sides there. So the next few slides are, are pretty technical. They really focus on some like calculation criteria. Um, so I'll just kind of go through a high level for these next three. On the left of the page, you'll see what we have in our code right now. We have, um, a table, for example, that points to, um, a certain year storm and it has a certain depth associated with it. What we're proposing is on the right and it's actually just the text at the top. Um, we're proposing to take out the table, simplify what we're stating, and instead of having a table with these defined depths. We're pointing to a national NOAA Atlas rainfall data depth. So these numbers that are highlighted in red are pretty close to what we have shown, uh, in our code already. But this gives us the flexibility to just ensure if NOAA's data is being updated, uh, we're not behind, our code's not falling behind of the national data. Um, and it is site-specific too, it, it interpolates and, uh, estimates really where you are for a specific site. And this is something that we have commonly seen. So similar to that, um, we have another calculation criteria called a curve number, which is just a, a coefficient that looks at the surface. Type and then the soils and, and spits out a number. So, um, and that's what we, we use in many of our calculations. So an impervious, uh, area, the, the more impervious it is, it has a higher number, uh, the more grassy forested it is, it has a lower number. So we're proposing here to also look to a national, uh, really industry standard, um. Document, uh, titled the urban hydrology for small watersheds, also known as TR fifty-five. So it's once again, just the text on the top right of the page, uh, the excerpt below is really what the engineers would look to and pull out their numbers. So this would allow for, if there's any updates in that document, that we would continue to be in, in compliant and following the up-to-date material. This is also, uh, another calculation criteria, pretty much the same thing. Um, this is for channel flow, all about kind of, it's called a kinematic end. Real cool, um, this is really kind of the roughness that a channel provides, um, and we are once again going to remove the table. Have a small paragraph that just points, um, engineers or any developer who's looking at the code to refer to TR fifty-five. And they'll, they'll open up that manual and see the small table. Um, the information here is pretty consistent with what we have now. It actually expands upon it a little bit more, so it will be, uh, better for, um, you know, just a little bit more precise of calculations. So we also have some proposed changes, um, to our infiltration practices. Um, most of these changes are, um, related to inconsistencies that we had in our current ordinance. Um, the first one, the addition of a loading ratio, um, this is a criteria that basically looks at what you. How much water you can get into your infiltration basin without overloading it. So we're going to add in a statement that basically only allows a certain drainage area or a certain impervious area to get to an infiltration basin. Just to ensure that, uh, we are designing these properly and they will be functioning in a large storm. Um, additionally, so the other two, the clearance between the bed bottom and a limiting zone, which is pretty much bedrock. So, um. We have some varying kind of, uh, items in our ordinance that some areas say you need to have twenty-four inches between your infiltration basin. And your bedrock, another area, it says forty-eight inches. Um, so. We met with the stormwater committee and really kind of talked through what we want to do here. The DEP requires twenty-four inches. Um, so what we really ended up was requiring twenty-four inches between the bottom of a facility and then the top of bedrock. To allow that water to infiltrate down through the soil media. We are going to be requiring forty-eight inches if a facility was to be put in a floodplain. And this is really because we, we don't want to see basins in a floodplain. And if there ever is a time when we need one, we want to make sure we're doing everything we can in our power to ensure good practice there. Um, so additionally, for the setback, um, we have seen some modifications with this for small facilities. Um, we currently have the ordinance stating that you need to have twenty feet from like a rain garden to a building that has a subgrade. So in this case, we want to delineate a small facility versus large facility, just to promote green infrastructure on smaller lots. To allow them to use like a small rain garden. So this slide here, I'm not going to go into too much detail. Um, this is really all kind of focused on the numbers. We had a lot of inconsistencies in our, um, slopes that were required, whether it's an interior basin slope, exterior slope. So we are all about being consistent here, um, as well as ensuring some good practices. The one item I do want to touch on is our conveyance facilities, so our storm sewers. Currently, the ordinance requires them to be sized for a twenty-five year storm. We're going to increase that to a hundred year, which does align with the size that, you know. The size storm that a basin can handle. So this will help our water, um, get into our basins and kind of not be that choking point for the design. Uh, we're, we're also going to require inlet capacity calculations. So what this does is it will help, um, you know. A certain area has to go to a, a specific size inlet and these calculations, um, will really ensure that we don't have ponding on roadways. That we're spacing our inlets appropriately. So one of the other big areas that we're making changes to are, are O and M requirements. Um, so our proposed changes are really just to, to reiterate to any applicant coming in. That the town does not want to own any private facilities. They should be owned and maintained by HOA's private, um, owners or another entity. That can carry out like operation and maintenance, uh, responsibilities. Um, and on top of that, we're also going to require those folks to submit their own inspection reports two years. So we'll take any burden off of the town and put it on to the actual owners of the facilities. So going along with that, we're going to remove a, what we have a long-term stormwater facility maintenance fund requirement. Which pretty much says owners have to pay the town a deposit that would cover ten years of inspections. And then after that ten years, it's now on the town. So we don't want the town to have to front that. Um, so instead, we will be implementing a stormwater facilities, maintenance, maintenance and monitoring agreement. And this pretty much allows, um, a, a thousand dollar fee will need to be paid to execute a document. And prepare, you know, prepare the agreement, cover any legal expenses, um, and then the owner, owners will pay a five thousand dollar fee. That will only be used if a owner fails to maintain or if we have an emergency and it's not being addressed. Um, so that five thousand dollars will remain and it should always be at five thousand dollars if the town has to step in, do any maintenance work. It has to go back up to five thousand dollars. So that will help, um, pull some of those responsibilities off of the town. And help ensure that our, uh, private owned, owned facilities are being properly maintained, um, for, you know, the life of that development. So, uh, with that, just to reiterate the summary, we have, um, you know, some of our main points were to ensure the code promotes responsible development. In a more user-friendly manner, uh, we wanted to address the modifications that were, have been commonly requested and approved to help streamline the development process. Um, and also make some updates to better align with the DEP and be a little bit more stringent and address any errors and inconsistencies we saw throughout the code. Uh, finally, we wanted to address and remove any sort of ownership inspection and O and M responsibilities of these private facilities, uh, from the town. That, are there any questions?
Questions from council?
Yeah. Um, first of all, thank you. I know this has been a huge endeavor and a lot of people have worked on it. It's been in pause, in progress for a couple of years. Um, so I'm glad to find, to see it coming forward and looks like it's, um, dealt with a lot of the issues that we're, this is a big deal in, in our town. Um, the two questions that I have is, um, in thirteen, uh, nine thirteen oh five, where it's talking about waivers and the exemptions. It says that, um, these will be decided, um, by the municipality. And I was wondering, who is the municipality? Is that council? Is that zoning hearing board with these waivers, the land use administrator? Who, who, it, I didn't see a definition in the definitions of who is the town. And that's also says later that, um, these will be, you know, six, that this, the land use adminis. Um, we filed with the land use administrator and proved by the engineer. And then, and D, it says approved by the engineer or the town. So who actually is the town?
Yeah, it's a great question. So, um, in that section, it would be like a, following a typical waiver modification request, which would have to go through. And see, correct me if I'm wrong, um, through planning commission and they would have to see it and then it would come to town council as well. Um, so the engineer, we would provide our input and if it's something that we did not feel was appropriate, we would obviously, obviously voice that to you. Um, and allow you to make the decision.
Okay. Do we need to define like municipality or town or anything in there or say that it would be by the same process or? Because I, I wasn't there on it.
Sure, yeah, no, that's a great question. Yeah, we, we haven't run across an issue in that. So that's why we didn't specifically look at that section, but we can definitely clear that up.
Just so people know who.
Who it is.
Who, who is?
Who makes the town, yeah. Sure.
Um, the other, my other question was, um, how do you enforce HOA maintenance when HOAs dissolve?
Yeah, so, um, with that, there are agreements that are in place that are recorded. Um, so I know this has been an issue in the past, but where we are with stormwater now is, is it is being enforced and it needs to be carried along with that HOA. So if HOAs are dissolved, it's the responsibility of, of that location to, to have that entity. Because if they don't, they're in violation of the town's requirements. Um, so that's the point of pulling it off of the town. Um, to really help enforce the direction forward for them. Um, and if, you know. If that does arise, that could be a discussion that is had as to what the appropriate decision is. Um, but I would say that, you know, the town does not, the town has like sixty facilities already. So, um, the adjustments made would help find a different path of ownership.
Let me add to that real quick as an interjection, real quick, just for clarification. What's changed in stormwater since that problem was, in the past, the HOAs would dissolve and all of a sudden you had these ponds. Is there state laws that now dictate the ponds have to be on the deed, that property? So what's changed in law over time is now the stormwater features are actually on the real estate deed and that's what's closed that loophole as a major problem.
So each person in the HOA owns a piece of the.
Yeah.
Can't dissolve it now. So you could go after them because they're on the deed.
Yes.
Perfect.
But that was a major issue before this.
It's, it's huge.
Yes.
It's been a big.
And we're, we're seeing a lot of that now too. Um, you know, that life cycle's kind of taken hold. So I totally understand.
And that's moving forward, not with everything now.
Correct. Yes. Yeah, it will be, everything that is issued will be moving forward. So we can't kind of retroactively push people into this. Yeah.
Great. Those are my two concerns. Thank you so much. Very nice job.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you. That was one of my questions. Thank you. That was one of my top. My number one. Um, number two question was the slope ratios. Um, I know sitting in some of these meetings and through planning and zoning, et cetera. Um, very often developers would say, this is what the national standard is. This is what the standard is. Are we more in line now so that we don't have to hear that coming from the developers standing where you are now?
Yes.
They were always trying to get the exemptions on that based on something else.
Yes, yeah. So this is more in line and I'll say, I've seen in the code, there's things that are four to one, three to one, two to one. And like the same section of a, a basin. So, um, you know, this, the three to one slope is a common slope. That is seen from the basin side of, uh, things. So it should be more consistent.
See so many exceptions. Okay. Um, and then my other question was kind of a, kind of a small, smaller issue, but, um, it was in nine thirteen point twelve section. Talked about discharge to neighboring properties. And I know, um, in real estate right now, we're seeing more and more interior French drain sump pumps. And it recently became an issue in my neighborhood where a neighbor installed a sump that discharged toward the neighbor's house. And onto the street and caused a major ice.
Yeah.
Thing. Does this apply to that? Will that then mean that? If someone wants to get a fr- interior French drain sump pump, they have to go to the town for approval on that. Cause right now you don't have to do anything like that. Or have that some pump approved because if you have a some pump and shailer. The shailer has to come in and see it operating as part of the die test, things like that too.
Right. So can I grab my ordinance real quick? I didn't bring it up with me.
Yeah, cause MTSA right now is not going inside properties.
Okay.
They're only testing, die testing from the outside.
Sure, yeah. Just wanna.
Mm-hmm.
It was nine thirteen twelve.
Yeah.
I wish I had this all memorized. I'm not there. I'm not there yet.
Uh, subsection. I know.
On mine.
Oh, yeah, like on my, my copy was page twenty-five, cause I like page numbers.
Yeah, the page numbers, yeah. Sure. So the way that, you know, that, that should not be an issue that we see moving forward. I know this was not a section that we updated, right? This was, this is kind of what the code has said. So the way this should be handled is where we are, um, seeing a, a new system go in. For like a small, um, like residential development, they should have a actual sump that is installed. And is the mechanism for stormwater design. So their roof drain should be being directed to the sump on the property. Um, so we, we don't allow for a point discharge at other properties. Um. If there is like a some pump that is discharging to a road that is recent, it's a recent installation and is causing an issue. Um, I think that is kind of a separate issue of violation, maybe on the building side or kind of separate issue with them. Um, but yeah, the intent of the ordinance would not allow such a discharge.
Okay, but the folks who have the homes built in the seventies and eighties who are installing these right now, I guess they'll just be grandfathered.
They'll be grandfathered in. This is more of a, in my opinion, this is more of a building issue than it, because we're not dealing with stormwater when we're dealing with some pump from inside.
Right.
So it kind of doesn't fall under the stormwater incidents, even though we're discharging it.
Yeah.
Cause it's not considered stormwater. I know the town does require permits for French drains. So there's an issue there we could look into.
Yeah.
In that matter. I know. Trust me. Well, welcome to flooding issues in the local. It's an issue. So I think it's something we should.
Yeah.
But I think it, it doesn't both, it doesn't necessarily fit the stormwater.
Yeah, I'm just saying, just from my, in particular, my neighborhood, the issue kind of goes hand in hand with the water runoff that's coming from the store.
Joe's towards the street.
Bringing it on it. Yeah, just adding to it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I've seen a lot of municipalities really struggling with, uh, daylighting roof drains and some pump discharges creating icing issues.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions for council? Seeing none. Thank you. You may have to come back for answering if there are any public comments.
Yeah, not a problem.
Are there any, uh, public comments from individuals in the room? Of stormwater ordinance? Seeing none. Uh, anybody online that has a comment or question?
If you see. Share maybe.
Please raise your hand.
Do not see anyone online.
Okay. Thank you. Without any objection, uh, we've been closed, uh, the hearing.
Great job, Kelly.
Move on.
Thank you. I hope it wasn't too dry.
Good job.
And next up, the August twenty-second meeting minutes were included in our package. Uh, does anyone on council have any, uh, comments or changes to those minutes? Hearing none. I have a motion to accept them.
I move to approve the following minutes submitted to each member of council, the meeting of town council, August twenty-second, twenty twenty.
I move to approve the following minutes submitted to each member of council, the meeting of town council, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
That was a. Okay. Uh, next up, um, since Dr. Rock is not here, I will run with her reports. Uh, first up, under the Public Safety Committee, uh, is the chief's report. Keep up.
Good evening, everyone. You're welcome to the new town manager. How's good? Apologies. So, folks, you all have my monthly report, a couple items to note this month. On the role where we had national night out the beginning of August, I think it was by and large a success. Opportunity for us to engage the community and I think we pulled it off. So thanks for help of all the volunteers. I think I probably said that last month, but I'll echo it again because I know uh you all were down there for it. Uh, as I always do, I point out a myriad of training that we have. August was no different. Um, other things to note in my reports that I wanted to call attention to was Officer Metzger. Uh, assisted with uh camp cadet this year. Uh, there was a bike ride. Uh, the state police do it. They use surrounding agencies and we were happy to send Officer Metzger to participate in that. It was a day long of uh. I think they took a a long bicycle ride along the uh Rachel Carson Trail or something to that effect. And at any rate, um, I think it's the first year that we participated in it, so we'll hope to continue to do that. Uh. Our negotiator that's on the North Hills SRT team is part of a team that won against a. Uh, a competition against many agencies, including the FBI. So um your North Hills SRT team has some uh talent on it as far as negotiating goes. We also did shop with the cop in August. Officer Dell Ball participated, uh. Helped a child in need uh get some clothing and such that they needed down at the Ross Park Mall. I think that was organized uh by local departments here throughout Allegheny County. Also in August, Sergeant Eggly went up and helped uh teachers with North Allegheny School Districts as they began the uh school year. Unfortunately, doing some training in uh active shooter drills. So we tried to help the school district when they asked for that and that was the beginning of the year request from them. As you pointed out, Mr. President, in late August, probably about two weeks ago or so. We had two interns begin with us from Slippery Rock University, their master's students, uh both social worker interns. I believe before they can actually start working cases, they need about ten ride-alongs under their belt. So they're slowly getting to the point where they can actually assist our officers with cases. Um, it's been uh probably and also the reason they're not here this evening. Uh, challenge for them balancing their master's classes, full-time jobs, family, with also trying to find fifteen or so hours a week here. Uh, so I am working with them. Hopefully we'll have them here either October or maybe November to uh be introduced to you folks. Um, so we're hopeful that that program will be uh success, but uh we got to give it time to uh. To grow. Um. And I think that kind of covers it for the month. Anybody have any questions for me regarding anything?
Are you chairing the North Hill Ordinance Working Group or it was like you?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, RJ, May and uh Alex Coy. Uh, Wednesday, we're slated to meet Wednesday to kind of go over uh some, some of the other communities are doing right around us. Maybe bring you guys some ideas on, you know, what we like, what we don't. And go from there.
Uh, Ms. White, you're interested in serving? Um, I can't remember, there was.
Carolyn, I think Carolyn is involved in it.
Okay.
Uh, I believe she is. Wednesday, Carolyn. Then always ordinance.
When I hear you.
Yeah.
Yes, no, I talked to Brian about that today.
Okay, okay, perfect.
You can involve, so get ahold of me.
I have a question for you, Chief. On your report here, it talks about body worn cameras. Is there a time when these are finally going to get implemented? Where does this stand? Because I see here it says we're applying for another grant.
So Allegheny County, I think it's part of the, I I don't want to misspeak, but maybe the ARPA money that the county has. Is making an offer to agencies to get on board. I contacted them and said, well, we've already started the process. Uh, we're trying to work on, they believe that some of the money, if we qualify some of the money that they have, if they can. Provide it to us, maybe we can cover the town's portion of our current uh BJA grant.
Okay.
Uh, as far as when they'll be here. Uh, Mr. Singer, I will reach out to the salesperson and see if I have a tentative delivery date. I know that Mr. Grimm. Fox signed off on it several months ago, uh, but I am also understanding from the group that uh Ms. Great House and I speak with every, probably once a month. That this is a nationwide issue shortage and such, so uh the order's in. Probably like.
I just wanted to confirm they are ordered, they're on their way.
Like for explorers, right?
Wonderful, thank you, sir.
Yep. Anything else?
Thank you, thank you. Fire Marshal's report.
Good evening. Uh, I do not have anything to add to the report. Uh, if anybody has any questions, I can take them now.
Somebody having for Jeff? Okay, you got it easy. Yes. And the uh building permit report or the code enforcement report, I don't think we have. Uh, any representation here, but I'm sure Brian can field a question.
Yeah, I don't have anything else to add, but if you have any questions, I'll do my best.
Seeing them, okay. Then liaison reports. Carolyn, can you give us the liaison report for personnel board?
Um, good, I I honestly, I don't know if I should really bring this up. Until we have executive session tonight, there really is no new updates other than what we need to discuss later on.
Okay. Fair enough. And then Mr. Singer, there was no volunteer.
That's correct. There was no volunteer firefighters to.
Very good. Uh, is there any public comment on any public safety items? Again, if you're here, please stop up. And it's same if you're online, put your name in the chat box. Anybody?
No.
Okay, comments thing. Next up, Facilities Manager, Mr. Singer, can you run us through that?
Sure, uh, first item on here is staff reports, public works activity. Jeff, do you have any comments to make?
Uh, good evening. Um, along with my report, just some simple things there. Uh, paving program is on schedule. We're hoping to be uh completed by the thirtieth. Uh, weather permits, I I don't see that being a problem. Um, tennis court reconstruction project on schedule. Hopefully that'll be mid-October when we're completed again, whether whether we uh determine that with the coding. Um. We did receive our pre-treat system for snow removal, so we actually will be doing a anti-ice. Uh, process now for snow removal and uh. It's a sobriant solution that allows us to put it down up to seventy-two hours before a storm. Uh, we won't be doing all roads, but we'll be doing major roads and um. Think we're probably actually going to put this on the actual route on the website uh for a pre-treat. It's, it's kind of a big deal. It'll uh. The main idea is to any light snow, it'll melt, but any heavy snow, it'll allow us to pour plow it all the way down to the, to the. Street surface. So it's kind of a big deal. Um, window replacement program for this building. Um, I spoke to the folks on the twenty-sixth. There were some hardware issues. Uh, I'm still trying to get a total job cost, but that was the last piece of the puzzle that was the, the uh, the issue. So right now we're still waiting for manufacturer numbers. Um, as far as the HVAC system for this building, um, I've had multiple conversations with the engineering company. And uh, I finally feel like we're starting to get somewhere on that, but I don't really have a whole lot to report on that. And that is about it. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Nope, thank you.
Uh, moving on to liaison reports, uh, Mr. Casey, Environmental Advisory Committee.
We've had two rain garden workshops. We have a third one tomorrow. We're teaming up with the Heritage Center. They've been very helpful. Thank you very much. For sponsoring, well, first of all, they allow us to store, store all of our stuff inside and they've also supplied some snacks. And it's going quite well, but it's way, a way bigger job than we ever anticipated. So a lot of people have been showing up in off-hours and just trying to get things done. Also, special thanks to. To Jeff and his team for supplying the mulch and all the tools that we store in Heritage Center. But it's coming along quite well. If you get an opportunity to come over and see it, please do.
Any questions for Mr. Casey?
Just a comment. I think it looks great. I did stop and visit on Saturday and I'm very impressed with the work that's been done by that committee and group. Thank you.
No more questions. Um, Dr. Rock is not here this evening. Um, the Technology Committee meeting notes were in your packet. There's any questions, feel free to direct them directly to her or Brian, who might have attended. I'm not sure if you were.
I did, I did attend.
So Brian can answer any questions as well. Okay, moving on, uh, Stormwater Management's Ad Hoc Committee. Um, we've had no official meeting. We did continue to work with Kelly. Um, three email exchanges on this ordinance. Um, we'll be scheduling an upcoming meeting shortly. That's all I have to report for that. Are there any questions on the Stormwater Ad Hoc Committee? Then at this time, are there any public comments on facilities management from the audience? Bearing none, are there any online? Then I yield back to the Services Committee, Ms. Koon.
Okay, thank you. Um, we will begin with the McCandless Township Sanitary Authority, Mr. Casey.
The Minister in our packet.
Thank you. And moving on to the McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority, um, Ms. Zachary, before you begin, I do want to say I received my. Subscription notice today and I'm very impressed with the extra flyer that came in the envelope, but it was much more attractive. Eye-catching, a little fun facts and stuff like that. So whoever's idea this was, I compliment them on that, getting a little more. Excitement when you open the envelope. So thank you. If you have anything to report, please.
Um, the uh ambulance authority uh got a new ambulance, so they've been strutting that around and and showing that to people, so that's very exciting. We were in need of a new ambulance and also to remind everyone to look at your subscription. There are some good facts on there about the. Ambulance authority, I think people really aren't aware of how it functions and how it's funded and um. That flyer really gives you a lot of that information and hopefully more of that will be coming out in this uh town social media. Um, in the minutes or in your path, any questions on those?
No, thank you. And uh, moving to the Northland Public Library Authority, uh, Mr. Singer. If you, and I also got my flyer from the library today too.
Everybody, everybody's asking.
Mailbox tomorrow.
It's love your library month, so you'll start to see uh, you know, the yard signs up. We have them here uh, the town. Um, it's love your library month. Um, they are soliciting donations. They have matching um donations, so. If you're looking to give to the library, this is the month to do so. They can use all the benefit they can get. Um, they have a elected officials breakfast uh this Thursday uh from seven AM till nine AM. They were trying to get it done here before you get to work. Um, so everybody, I believe, received the invitation. Please attend um if possible. Um, they're in their budget. Um, I talked last time, they're having some issues with Allegheny County Rad Funding is changing the formula. It looks like they're going to adjust a little and it's going to affect their budget, but likely not what they're requesting from us, the town, from their initial ask. Um, you will see later on in the agenda, there will be a request. They're applying for the Keystone Grant again. Um, this is a multi um township grant. Marshall will actually be the applicant for them this year. Um, but it does require all the municipalities participating to sign off on it. Um, it's something you'll see later. We did this again last year at the same time. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any further comment from council on the Services Committee? Any public comment? Nothing online. That concludes the report of the Service Committee. Thank you.
I will go to old business. We have an opening on the uh Financial Development Promotional Committee for the Heritage. excluding.
Yes, um, I would like uh to make a motion to appoint Charles Ironman. To the Financial Development and Promotional Committee for an unexpired term expiring December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Second, we'll give Carol. Um, uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Welcome aboard, Mr. Ironmanism.
It's an Ironman?
Ironman.
Okay.
Under new business, uh, Brian, want to give us the briefing? Um, many of these.
Uh, yeah, there's uh the letter in our packets uh we received from, from our engineering firm. Um, this is uh based on some uh. Uh, landscaping, some other things that were completed, um, for the requirements of the, the plan that was submitted. Uh, so basically the, the bond is lowered uh because they've completed some of the work that would have been covered by the bond if they did not complete it.
Uh, the floor is open for anyone who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a partial release of bond reduction request number three. Submitted by HNF Property Development LLC for the fastener farmers' plan in the amount of forty thousand. Seven hundred and fifty-six dollars as recommended by the Town Engineering Engineers Review Letter dated August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I just want to add a comment. Uh, this is in my um ward. Um, I have been kind of watching it. There were some stormwater issues that the town did address. Um, and I do want to note that there is still money remaining, so that if they are long-term issues, they can be resolved at the end.
Any other comments before we vote? Seeing none. Uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nope, okay, motion carries. Okay, next up, eight B. Uh, Brian, want to brief us on this one?
Yeah, um, Tuskman Singer touched on this. Uh, this is the, the Keystone Grant. It's a state-funded grant to do improvements. Um, usually at the facilities. Uh, that's what Northland's looking to do with this uh particular grant. Um, basically the, what the state wants is that every municipality admits that. There's ownership of the actual library and they'll take care of it and and um. That's really the, the gist of what this resolution is and gives the library the authority to apply for the grant.
Okay. Now the floor is open to a motion.
Parliament Commission. I move to adopt tentatively identified resolution number thirteen of the twenty twenty-two series. The resolution of the Borough of Bradford Woods, Borough of Franklin Park, Township of Marshall, Town of McCandless, Township of Ross. County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, ensuring the undisturbed use of the Northland Public Library. For fifty years or the useful life of the grant, whichever is shorter.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Singer, um, is there any comments before we vote? Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, welcome Karen. And then eight C. Let me roll this to Trisha.
We, we can, I can handle it. Um, it, it's uh with uh my appointment to, to town manager, this is the uh. Process that we have to give me authority to uh make, take action on the uh accounts for the town. Um, and that's really, we're just kind of cleaning that up, so I have the authority to do it.
Do they have any specific questions for Trisha about this? Pretty much housekeeping stuff, so, okay.
I'll make the motion. Motion to adopt tentatively identified resolution number fourteen for the twenty twenty-two series authorizing the investment of town funds. And the town manager to make transfers of said deposited funds from and to accounts only in the name. Of and owned by the Town of McCandless.
Second. Second by Mr. Singer. Uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 The opposed. And the next one is basically the same thing, but for the assistant.
I'll make a motion then. I make a motion to adopt tentative. I make a motion to adopt tentatively identified resolution number fifteen of the twenty twenty two series authorizing the investment of town funds by the Assistant Town Manager to make transfers of said deposited funds from and to accounts only in the name of and owned by the town of McCandless.
Second.
Second, Mr. Singer. Uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye. Hearing none. Motion carries. And then it's a similar thing for the pension.
I'll make a motion.
We're on a roll, Mr. Casey.
Motion to adopt tentatively identified resolution number sixteen of the twenty twenty two series. Amending resolution number seven of the twenty twenty two series by naming current signatory signatories authorizing to sign documents relative to the town of McCandless defined benefit pension plans.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye. Uh, any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make one more motion. Motion to, let's see.
One probably needs a little.
Yeah, you may wanna wait on.
Okay.
Yeah.
An introduction.
I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, I I thought it was, I should put my glasses on.
Uh, Brian, do you wanna? Give us the big picture on this one?
Um, I'll hand this one off to to Tricia, cause she's been involved in this a little bit more.
This resolution is response to some conversations that council members have had in regards to appointments to committees and boards and commissions. Uh, in twenty eighteen, a resolution was passed to encourage citizen involvement um that um prevented council members from serving as voting members on the authority boards and commissions. This uh, resolution removes that clause so that in the event that either the positions can't be filled or that it's in the town's best interest to have a council member as a voting member on the board, that we are allowed to do so again. So it's simply removing a clause that was put into place uh, to allow more flexibility in appointing boards and commissions.
When was it put in place?
In twenty eighteen, I believe.
And were you serving at that time?
Um, I I felt this.
Yeah, remember the context on why?
Um, during that time, um, community involvement was not as emphasized as we do now. And so literally all the positions on all the boards were taken up by council members. So there were a lot of people who wanted to be involved in the community. So we decided to open that and the same people would be on like five boards. So, and they stayed on them forever. There was no term limit. So it really knocked out people's opportunity to be involved. So we looked at this and came up with this some way, just trying to help involvement and um looking back, this is just a little tweak that I think um, some of the boards may need um some at times a council member to be on there, but we know we're trying to inhibit um, community involvement. You know, we, I think that's been one of the best things that's happened in the last few years is so many people in the community are now involved. So that was our thought and and this is the improvement.
Question, just to clarify, so this uh, we will continue to have the term limits as we have with many appointments, so.
Well, that, I would like to discuss that if we could. I have a situation where I have a board member who is very productive and it would be counterproductive to remove him. And therefore, I think we actually have a stopgap because the council has the right to approve or deny whoever is being uh, appointed to these positions. But in this case, we're taking an exceedingly uh, specialized individual out of my authority and uh, removing him with with really no real rationale. It'll it'll hurt our community if we do remove him. He saves the authority hundreds of thousands of dollars, not thousands, hundreds of thousands.
So tonight's resolution simply removes clause eleven, which is removing the stipulation on council members. It does not address it. Everything else remains in effect. If you want that addition, we would need to either pass tonight and then resubmit an additional resolution in the future or postpone this for a future council meeting. If you wanna do it all at once. Did I get that right, Steve?
You did.
Okay, so really what's in front of us is, yeah, are we accepting of the 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 board of the council person could be appointed to a board. And we can certainly yeah, tackle it in two, two separate ways.
Yes.
I know, comments? Do we wanna just focus on one tonight?
I I would prefer to focus on one tonight.
And then if we want, yeah.
I'm certainly fine with that.
Okay, okay. What's everyone's pulse on this? Is there something?
Um, I mean, I'm I'm fine with doing one tonight and then taking a look at the other one. I again, I always go back to we want the most qualified candidates to do these jobs. Whatever gets us to that point is what it should be. So I I I agree with Jack. If we have a qualified candidate, I hate to see them turn out because they're the most qualified. At the same point, you know, if one of the most qualified candidates is somebody on council for something, then that should also again be the qualified candidate. It ultimately comes down to us appointing them. I just think that should be an emphasis, but I I'm I'm fine with where we're going tonight and where we're going in the future.
Yeah. Anyone else have additional comments on there? Yeah, Carolyn, you have any?
Well, I was gonna say I agree with what Jack and Jason are saying, so I'm also fine focusing on one tonight too.
Yeah, I I like this because we can, and and some, we're giving a lot of money to some authorities and we have a liaison there that can't really vote and make change. And I think that that that's an advantage to all future boards that 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 we have that option and that power to do that.
Agreed.
So. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay, uh, would someone like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion then.
Okay, Casey.
Where's it at?
Let it happen.
Motion to adopt tentative, tentatively identified resolution number seventeen of the twenty twenty two series. Amending the town's appointment policy for authorities, boards, commissions and advisory committees, resolution number two of two thousand eighteen.
Second, I'll second it. Uh, any last comments before we vote? Uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Mr. Casey, you wanna take this one or would you rather have Tricia?
I'm happy to introduce it.
But Tricia.
Please.
Good evening, the you uh, item you have before you is a professional services RFP award. The town began the RFP process for pension advisory management services in May um prior to the previous town manager leaving. We've continued it through the summer um, with interviews in June and reference checks July and then final review and F forty four prefer preparation in the last month or so. Um, the committee comprised of an MPOA union representative, uh, one of the police officers, two council members, as well as myself after um, Mr. Grim left. Um, we reviewed seven applicants. The RFP listed minimum obligation or sorry, minimum requirements. Uh, one of which was that they have um, ten or more PA municipal pension clients, that they had um, a certain level of municipal pension um, oversight, ten years of team experience. You know, uh, policy insurance, et cetera. Then those RFPs were further analyzed for experience and expertise of the firm and the team that was assigned, reporting accountability, quality of services provided, and the investment performance management services, as well as the cost included in those services. Um, we had a very qualified pool. Um, the um, they ranged from three firms that provide both management and advisory services as well as four firms that provided just the advisory service with a supplemental firm providing the management services. So the fee structure could alter depending on which one we we selected. And we interviewed three firms, as mentioned. All three were extremely qualified, well eat well versed in customer service, um, performed well. Based on some of the characteristics and various concerns or opportunities with each firm. Tonight, we're making the recommendation to go with Manning and Pierre, which is the town's historical provider. Um, there was an ink, I'm sorry, a reduction in fees for uh, a portion of those asset investments. Um, again, they've performed historically very well for us in the last few years. Um, and are exceeding the benchmarks for some of their competitors. So um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to address them. There is a whole act forty four process with this. The next ten days will need to um, make all of the respondents aware of our desired selection. They'll have ten days to file appeals. We'll have right to know requests. If there's no appeal process, then they will, we will be able to award the contract. We are anticipating a three-year contract that will expire in December of twenty twenty five, but also have the right to extend that for three one-year terms. Um, the town also reserves the right to terminate the contract uh, with a sixty days written notice. I apologize for that typo and memo. Um, it is sixty days. Um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them um, to the best of my ability. Uh, or I will draw on uh, some of the other members that were participating in the interviews. Questions?
Casey, anything to add?
Think you did a fantastic job.
So mouthful, I apologize.
Literally, some of these RFPs were close to three hundred pages. Hope it's some amount of information.
Was not as small as ever.
And but it did, it did get us a reduction in our expenses. So it it was worth the exercise.
They are performing well. Um, no one is performing fabulous right now with the current market conditions. And realistically, may not be the best time to switch um, investment firms, given the market volatility. But overall, we were very satisfied with their response and we have um, plans to meet with them beginning next quarter.
Um, I'd like to say, uh, thank you for the hard work on this. Um, the town had historically not um, offered RFPs and reevaluated for services for many decades. So um um, previous manager Grim, is that what he's called now? What was he called?
It's.
Old manager Grim, that doesn't sound right. Okay, um, and I looked at all of our um all of our services and said, you know, we need to, we need to look at these. We need to make sure that we'll, that we owe it to the community. And in fact, it's a um, it's really a standard to do it every so often. So it's taken us a while. We've been ticking them off one at a time.
Yes.
Um, and I'm glad to see that this one is another, one more thing ticked off. So we're now, we're doing the best that we can for our community and for our taxpayers and for our police.
And one thing, we we found another way to save some money, which we will bring up at in at another uh, what uh, regarding the pensions, that could save us another what, eighteen to twenty twenty thousand, which that's after we do, we make this move. Anybody else have any questions for Tricia? Carolyn, do you have anything?
Nope.
Okay, uh, the floor is open for a motion, uh, if anyone.
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve tentatively identified resolution number eighteen of the twenty twenty two series appointing Manning and Napier as Investment Manager for the town of McCandless, defined benefit pension plans.
Second.
Second.
Um, everyone in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And is this next one yours, Tricia? Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you explain in English to everybody what we're doing here?
So annually, we submit payroll information to Mock and Hop, who is our actuary. They also prepare the annual MMOs for our police pension, as well as the other two smaller pensions. Well, direct defined contribution and defined benefit contribution plans. Based on the salaries and the actuarial valuations that have been done. Um, they generate what the expectation is for us to contribute to the pension plans annually. So these are the estimates for twenty twenty three. These will go in the twenty twenty three budget. So the police one is typically uh, funded by state aid. Um, we have had to supplement it by the general fund in recent years, but um, and then we also have a small contribution to the phased out defined benefit plan that you see as the twenty two four eighty eight. And then they have a estimate for the money purchase uh, plus plan. That amount is dispersed over the multiple departments. Um, and we generally make that on a bi-weekly basis through payroll. But the police is the big one. It's uh, this year, it is estimated at five fifty nine zero zero one. So that is a reduction from last year. That has to do with the actuary evaluation that was used, as well as the current salaries. We are currently hiring police officers, but that affected our gross wages for twenty twenty two. So um, I just need your acknowledgement of receiving these. They will be submitted back to Mock and Hop used to prepare the twenty twenty three budget. And then we will make these contributions in September of twenty twenty three. October. That was probably not.
And twenty four.
No, these ones are just for twenty twenty three. We do them annually. So annually, we prepare and send in either estimates of future payrolls or current payrolls, and then they send us back these forms. The town acknowledges receipt of them, planned for them in the twenty twenty three budget, and then they go in to the state.
Tricia, can you clarify? We have one plan that only has
Two.
People on it.
Yes, we have.
I think reported in one of the local media outlets that we weren't. Can you explain that?
As part of the, as part of the every three years, we're, we are audited by the state typically. Um, we have three plans. The police plan, which is fully funded, or you know, anywhere from ninety four to a hundred and sixteen percent funded in the last three years. Um, we have a small plan that includes two individuals that have not worked for the town in probably twenty years. Um, they are the two remaining individuals on this plan. The payout on that plan is typically around thirty six thousand dollars. You can see the MMO contribution is roughly twenty three thousand. So the difference being investment income. Um, we make, will eventually make that payment as we go more as a budget item. So that was planned years ago, prior to any of our service here at the town. So that plan, like I said, is just two individuals, has a, has a small liability and it is accounted for in the MMO process.
We have the funds.
Yes.
Care of these two.
Regardless of what this MMO says, we budget what that contribution is going forward, just to be safe.
I know that was.
Yes, so well, and that budget goes in the four oh one administration budget. So you'll see that under pension liability in the budget presentation for town administration. Whereas the police one goes into four ten. And then, as I mentioned, the purchase plans are spread out among the other departments.
Any other questions for? So Steve, with make knowledge.
We acknowledge.
Any objections to the knowledge?
Okay.
No.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'll head shake you. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next up, uh, it's like, uh, we have a resignation. Uh, if you could, please.
Okay, so this is um, Mark Laporte's resignation from the personnel board. Um, I personally wanted to thank him for all his time and support um, for assisting with the personnel board.
Um, for assisting with the personnel board. Um, so in that case, I will read the motion. Uh, motion to accept the resignation of Mark Laporte from the personnel board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Singer. Uh, everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Laporte, for your service. Uh, now to wrap things up, is there any uh general public comments from anyone in the audience? No. None, no takers online. Okay. Uh, so I have an emotion adjourned to executive session where we will discuss personnel and budget matters. No further actions. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
Motion to return and. Go to executive session.
Second.
Second.
Singer, one favor signify by saying.
Aye.
Thank you.
All these seconds tonight, it just proves that you're second even none.